Well, hello. Good evening and welcome everyone to our public information meeting and public hearing tonight. This is on Dow Silicones Corporation hazardous waste storage and disposal facility proposed license renewal. I'm glad you're here with us tonight. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I work in Eagles Environmental Support Division. I will be the moderator kind of background in the background today as we go through our hearing. I'm just going to run over a few housekeeping details before I turn it over to our staff here that are with us today. First of all, the lines are all muted at this point. I'll explain in a minute about how to well unmute your lines if you have questions or want to make a comment later on. And we're also recording this meeting. So like we do with all our public meetings, they're all recorded. And we post them to our YouTube channel. Try to get this one up there in the next day or so. So you can find it there. Also want to make sure you note the chat function in your Zoom toolbar. If hit chat, a couple of messages might go out to you as an attendee. So keep your eye on that for just additional information. Okay, if you have a question tonight, we do, we're going to kick it off with a presentation. Then after our presentation, we will open it up for questions for a short period of time. If you have a question, you can type your question into Q and A box on your Zoom toolbar. You can also click the raise hand icon. And when you do that, it'll indicate you have a question and we will unmute your line. So you can ask your question. Doesn't look like we have anybody on the phone with us tonight, but if you are listening on the phone, you could hit pound two and that'll again show us that your hand is raised and we'll call you by the last few digits of your phone number to answer a question. Now, after do the presentation and the Q and A, we will be opening the actual hearing and the hearing is the time when you'll actually make your comment for record. And with that time, I will explain how that works. Our hearings officer will explain how that works. It's going to happen probably about six forty-five or seven o'clock around around that time period. So with that, those are the basic introductory details I have. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Daly and he's gonna take us through the rest. So go ahead, Dan, if you're on.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Again, welcome everybody. I'm Dan Daly. I'm the permit engineer and project manager assigned to process the hazardous waste facility operating license renewal application. Couple of things tonight, I'm going to go over some details and the opportunities tonight at the meeting and hearing. We're going to talk in detail tonight and offer some technical details about the hazardous waste operations at Dow Silicones. And the hazardous waste facility operating license renewal that's been drafted to put conditions on those operations. So as part of that, we're going to have an informal question and answer period like Jim said at the end of the presentation. And so there'll be a period there where you can ask questions off the record and Eagle staff and a panel will respond to those questions. And then as soon as that concludes, then we'll go right into the formal public hearing and the difference being that we will not respond to comments during the public hearing. But all of your comments will be transcribed into the public record and we'll receive a written response from the agency. Okay, next slide.
Hey, Dan, I think you gotta share your slides. So you can go ahead and share. Mine are still up there. Go ahead.
Thank you. Let's see. All right. Hopefully these are, these are my slides now.
Yeah.
And here we go. All right. So as part of the agenda tonight, like I say, we'll go over the site information for hazardous waste management. The agency's authority to regulate this process and how the facility's been licensed over the years and what conditions have been put on their operations. Those conditions are going to be the same in this license renewal as they have been historically. But we're still going to go through all those details. We're going to describe those operations. We're going to describe some of the legacy releases at the facility prior to the RECA program coming into play that regulates hazardous waste. And after discussing those items, we'll have a compliance summary. And then we'll talk about where do we go from here in the license renewal process and then the public comment portion will begin. Tonight, we have several people here from Materials Management Division staff. Rich Conforty, if you could turn on your camera and wave. Rich is my supervisor. And he is going to be our hearings officer tonight. And then there's myself, the environmental engineering specialist. Joe Rogers is the project geologist assigned to the review of the application. Ardas Tuzuski is our environmental quality specialist. My Art. Tricia Confer and Ethan Israels are our two Bay City District Office inspectors assigned to the site. And all of us will be available for the informal question and answer period here. Okay, so where can you find more information on the site? We have a website, michigan.gov/dowsilicones that has all of the current licensing information, including copies of the draft license, the renewal application and fact sheet, and the current license that the facility is operating under. If you want to be added to the official facility specific mailing list to receive notifications anytime there are any updates to the license or operations at the facility related to hazardous waste, you can send your contact information to me and I'll get you on the mailing list. We also have a gov delivery subscription that you can sign up for at michigan.gov eagleconnect. And the difference between that and the mailing list is that you'll basically receive a notice every time the Eagle website is updated for Dow Silicones. So it's more of a difference of timing. But anything official for the facility for changes or modifications would be something that you'd want to sign up on the facility mailing list for. And more informational types of things, you'd want to sign up on Eagle Connect. Okay, so there's also another option, our waste data system, which is on the Eagle website as well. That's more of your metadata. That's going to tell you when things were submitted, when they were responded to and what the dates were on those sorts of things for the facility. So these are all good places to go to get site information. The regulatory authority, as I mentioned earlier, is the Federal Resource Conservation and Recovery Act of nineteen seventy-six. This act was enacted by Congress to regulate the cradle to grave management of hazardous waste in the United States. Michigan became authorized to administer the RECA program on behalf of US EPA with the initial authorization being in the nineteen eighties. And it's been kept up to date since that time. Our codification of that authorization is in Michigan's Part 111 Hazardous Waste Management of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. And it's under Part 111 that we are proposing to issue this license renewal. So when we talk about, well, what is cradle to grave regulation? It's regulation of hazardous waste from its point of initial generation to its point of ultimate disposal. And so there are three types of operators that handle hazardous waste under the Part 111 program. The generator facility, this is typically where the waste sees its initial generation point, comes out of a manufacturing process or otherwise generated. And then it's containerized usually, or perhaps put into tanks or tanker trucks and transported if need be for treatment, storage or disposal at a destination facility. And the Dow Silicones license renewal is licensing storage and disposal as a destination facility for onsite waste and some offsite waste that comes from other Dow Silicones owned facilities. Okay, so how did this happen? The initial federal permit was issued under RECA to Dow Corning Corporation back in September of nineteen eighty-eight. And so Dow Corning operated under that license for about twelve or that permit for about twelve years until they received a renewed state operating license in lieu of a federal permit based on our delegation of authority. In September two thousand and twelve, we renewed that operating license, which contained the same conditions as the previous two. And then in two thousand and sixteen, the Dow Silicones Corporation changed its name and became Dow Silicones. And then in March of two thousand and twenty-two, they submitted another renewal application for which we are proposing to take a final action by September twenty-nine. So Dow Silicones manufactures silicone products. And as part of that manufacturing process, they produce wastes such as spent solvent materials or materials that exhibit characteristic of hazardous waste, or maybe they are a discarded commercial chemical product that needs to be managed as a waste because it's it's no longer going to be used in the manufacturing process. It can't be used. So in every license, we have a waste analysis plan that Dow needs to use to put down the technical parameters associated with the waste, whether they get it from knowledge of their manufacturing process or MSDS forms or other bits of information that give them enough knowledge to be able to handle the waste safely. In in the tanks and container and the tanks and containers are in the landfill that they're proposing to use. And in order to make sure that the engineered items are always in spec. There are inspection schedules, whether they be weekly, monthly, semi-annually, to make sure that manufacturing specifications are being maintained and waste is being handled in accordance with the conditions that have been put down under the license. Personnel training is also included so that people handling the waste can do so in a manner that will not cause harm to themselves or to others. And to raise awareness of what sort of characteristics the waste has. The contingency plan is also a part of every license that we have. These are the emergency procedures for personnel onsite, including evacuation procedures if necessary. The contingency plans are shared with local emergency responders such as police and fire department and hospitals so that they know what potential failures there could be at the site and how they might need to re to respond to those. Each license also contains a closure plan and financial assurance coverage. And you never know. We don't expect Dow Silicones Corporation to have any kinds of issues where they would need to leave the site, abandon the site or you know, any other of those kinds of problems, but a closure plan with financial assurance is in place for that scenario. So the company puts in place how they would remove the waste, how they would decontaminate the area, how they would sample soil and groundwater to make sure that nothing is left in place. And then that plan includes an estimate of costs to do all those things. And a financial assurance mechanism is filed with the agency that the director of the agency can draw upon to implement that closure plan if needed. And then for everything that the facility does in order to maintain the treatment or excuse me, I'm sorry, the storage and disposal, they do not do treatment. They keep records onsite and those records are subject to inspection at unannounced by Eagle staff. And they periodically also have to submit reports to the agency for various items. So that's what's in every license that we issue for a hazardous waste treatment, storage or disposal facility. In this particular license, I'm going to talk about further some of the conditions for container and tank storage and landfill disposal in some of the next few slides here. There's also environmental monitoring conditions at this site for surface water for and for groundwater. And so we'll talk about those programs. And then there is a corrective action cleanup program that's in place for this facility for legacy releases to soils and groundwater and how they're being controlled. So Tricia, you want to start out on this one and
Sure. And you'll advance for me?
Sure.
Thank you. Well, I'm the local inspector for the Dow Silicones facility. This is a Google Earth map of the overview, as you can see in the red boundaries. West of the property is Waldo Road, south is Sagan or excuse me, Salzburg and I gotta start all over again. I said that so wrong. Please forgive me. I'm directionally challenged some days. The red boundary is around that shows the group, the boundary of the property. West of the map is Saginaw Road, east is Waldo Road and south is Salzburg Road. Next slide. And this is a licensed facility. This license is a captive facility, which means it only has receives waste from onsite generators, some offsite Dow silicone facilities and contractors who do work on the Dow Silicones facility. The property contains the licensed facility. So the blue, light blue is approximate boundary facility. And then the little square that's inside is considered the licensed area. Next slide. So the licensed facility layout, we have the nine eight oh nine building for container storage, which is the little yellow green box. The eight oh six tank farm, which is outdoor storage tank farm with secondary containment, which is the light blue box. This whole hash area is considered the landfill, but the landfill is could you point out where the actual landfill is cited, Dan, on that map? It's, there you go. Yeah. So it's not that whole slash area. And that's the eight hundred slash one thousand block landfill. Okay, next slide. We're going to talk about the eight oh nine, the container storage building. There's the loading deck north of the pallet, the staging area, which is protected from the weather. As you can see, there's lines marking where the aisle spacing errors for the pallets, which are stacked too high. The secondary containment is within the whole building and the overflow to the west to the outdoor spill pond. And they have procedures for ignitable, reactive and incompatible wastes. Next slide. The capacity for the container storage building is eighty-five thousand. It contains characteristic hazardous waste, which include ignitable corrosive and reactive, toxics for metal, volatile organics, semi-volatile organic compounds and chlorinated compounds. Hazardous waste from non-specific sources, which are spent halogens and non-spent halogen solvents and discarded chemical products as acute or toxic hazardous waste like lab packs and other container waste due to ignitability, combustibility, reactivity or other toxic characteristics. Next slide. This is the tank farm. It contains six ten thousand tanks. There's a loading dock on the west side. Secondary containment is a dyed area around the tanks. There is also an overflow south of the build of the tank farm, which goes to the spill pond, which is adjacent to the container storage area. Next slide. Can we talk more about the tanks? I think we do. Okay, basically the same thing. There's six tanks, each each tank is ten, ten thousand gallons each. And Dan, could you touch on the other, the two that is not the solvent waste?
Sure. Okay, so yeah, there's, there's six tanks in the tank farm, up to sixty thousand gallons worth of storage. Characteristic hazardous wastes are ignitable, corrosive and reactive. The reactive waste that we were talking about here are chloro silanes or silane waste. They are reactive with water. So they have two tanks that are segregated for that purpose from the other four, just to make sure that any spent solvents that may contain some water do not come in contact with those ways. The other hazardous waste characteristic is toxicity. So this is a leaching procedure for metals, volatiles, semi-volatiles and chlorinated compounds. And so what happens is they take a sample of this material and they subject it to what's called the toxicity characteristic leaching procedure. If the material leaches out at above a certain concentration, it's considered a characteristic of toxicity for that hazardous waste. So those are characteristic hazardous wastes. The spent halogenated and non-halogenated solvents are part of the processing of the silicones. And so they're used for their intended purpose until they get to a point where they can no longer be used in the manufacturing. So they are sent out for storage in the tank farm. And then the discarded commercial chemical products is toxic hazardous waste. And in this fourth bullet, Michigan has waste that it lists for toxicity over and above what US EPA lists under the Federal Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. These Michigan specific wastes for this facility include allicloride, cobalt and styrene.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Let's move on. You can probably have to talk about the landfill too. Thanks.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you, Tricia. I, um, so it's the eight hundred or thousand block landfill is is old. It's about nineteen forty-three, which we have on another slide in here and it's also on the website if you want to see the timeline for it. But in nineteen forty-three, this was pre-ReCA. This was prior to having standards and conditions that we have today. Dow constructed a landfill with a clay base. The clay base is naturally occurring. It's over twenty-five feet thick and it's uniform, continuous and homogeneous. So which means basically that it's already compacted to the point where the diffusion rate through the clay is that one times ten to the minus seventh that we look for for diffusion rate. And it's continuous and homogeneous. And this was determined based on engineering testing under an equivalency demonstration to a Part 111 liner. And the requirements we have today for liners. And essentially what they did was resistivity testing. They took a sample of the clay. They subjected it to water pressure and they looked at how long it would take to travel or basically permeate the clay to make it wet and change its characteristics. And so that's how they came up with the equivalency. There's a, since that time, so they operated that from nineteen forty-three until the new requirements for liner systems and landfills came into play under RECA on Part 111. And so as part of those requirements, they installed a clay curtain around the perimeter of the landfill in nineteen eighty. And they keyed it into the clay base. So basically they excavated around the perimeter of the landfill into the clay so that there was the ability to put the clay curtain down into the clay at a certain depth below where that surface begins. And that would stop the lateral movement of any liquid generated from waste leaching inside the landfill. And by keying it in, it doesn't have a gap to go through either. So the that clay wall was constructed to stop that lateral movement. Currently Dow uses an interim cover during the operation of the landfill. The landfill is, well, it's a fill. And so there's a certain amount of space that is authorized for disposal of waste in the landfill. And that airspace is how much space they have left to go. Well, what we found through experience and is now in the requirement is that if you don't cover your waste as you're filling, then it creates odors and other nuisances. So they have this interim cover for now while they still have airspace in the landfill. And so that's what they're using right now. When all of the airspace is used up or Dow Silicones should decide that they're going to stop using the landfill prior to that achieving that full authorized disposal capacity, they'll put a final cover on the site in accordance with the closure plan that's included in the proposed operating license. So as as they talked about just a second ago, there's leachate in the landfill. And so when it rains, the rainwater, for example, percolates through the waste material and can pick up part of the waste material and dissolve it. And that that liquid material with a dissolved waste is the leachate. And what can happen is if your leachate gets to be too much inside the landfill, it can put pressure on the constructed portions of the landfill. And that can cause your landfill engineering to degrade. So we don't want that. So a leachate collection system is installed. And so the leachate percolates to the bottom of the landfill. It enters a tile system and then is pumped out at a manhole over to the wastewater treatment plant that is Dow Chemical. And so there's a transfer line that goes from Dow Silicones to Dow Chemical for treatment of the leachate in the wastewater treatment plant. This relieves the pressure on the engineering and allows the landfill to last much longer. So the same thing happens outside the landfill. When it rains, groundwater levels rise and they exert pressure on the outside of the landfill. This can also cause the landfill engineer engineering to degrade. And so there's a site interceptor system onsite, which does other things too, but this also helps control the external pressure of groundwater on the outside of the walls. And so that site interceptor system also pumps to a manhole and that water is also managed at the Dow Chemical wastewater treatment plant.
Thanks, Dan. So as Dan described the functioning of the landfill, this is what hazardous waste can be accepted into the landfill, toxic for lead and any compatible non-hazardous waste. Prohibited to be accepted in landfill are other hazardous waste, liquid waste and waste with free liquids, waste that could affect or damage the clay base, leachate collecting piping system or wastewater treatment plant or procedures leachage will do the same. Waste that generates gas that can affect the cap permeability or creates a violation of the air permit. Next. I think this is Joe, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm actually, Tricia, I'm going to take the timeline here and then Joe's going to handle the technical parts.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Tricia. So like we talked about earlier, the plant was developed in nineteen forty-three. So like we talked about earlier, the plant was developed in nineteen forty-three. It's a three hundred and fifty acre property and it's mostly for the manufacturing of silicone products. In nineteen seventy-six, the Federal Resource Conservation and Recovery Act was enacted, creating the licensing program and um later in about nineteen eighty-four, the federal act was amended with the hazardous and solid waste amendments that requires a cleanup program for any historical or legacy releases at properties based on the management of hazardous waste. So over the years, there were releases to the environment detected from operations and prior to the hazardous waste regulations being enacted that needed to be cleaned up. In nineteen eighty-four, Dow discontinued disposing of hazardous waste in the landfill. So Dow, under this proposed license, would like to continue to keep the landfill in operation even though they're not using it for disposal of lead contaminated waste right now. Just in case they should need to dispose of lead contaminated waste in the future. In nineteen ninety-eight, because of the releases at the facility, Dow Silicones installed a site interceptor system. And this is what we call a presumptive measure, so the, the facility didn't go through and take soil and groundwater samples of the entire site to see exactly where all releases were or where contamination might be right now. But rather they, they decided we'll put a French drain system in around the perimeter of the three hundred and fifty acre site. And we'll pull groundwater out of it to make sure that no groundwater gets offsite. That might be contaminated. So in two thousand eighteen, uh, everything was going good with that, um and still is. Um, in two thousand eighteen, there was another release um from a waste management unit on the site caused by heavy rainfall. So the chemical sewer overflowed and uh caused contamination to soil. That was subject to additional investigation and based on that investigation in twenty twenty-two, it, it was determined that there were three areas where soil contamination was confirmed because of the release. Currently, we're working with Dow on an approved work plan um for further investigation of the extent of soil contamination. And Joe's gonna talk in a lot more detail about monitoring programs and the sampling that's going on, so, Joe?
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, I, Joe Rogers, I'm the geologist assigned to the site, I, I've been uh working on the site on and off uh for about twenty years, so um I know the site pretty well, um and there are six monitoring programs shown here on the screen that are uh currently in place. Uh and also are part of the proposed license as well. Uh, they monitor the, the deep groundwater, which is um groundwater that is uh in the uppermost aquifer is defined by our regulations and the federal regulations. And the purpose of that monitoring is to specifically try and detect any potential releases from the landfill. They also monitor the shallow groundwater, and I'm gonna talk about all these in more detail, I'm just kinda giving you a quick overview here and then I'm gonna hit these with a little bit more detail and, and some figures. But they also have the shallow groundwater that is conducted, uh there's a, a, you know, like eight or ten feet of shallow sand on top of the clay that the landfill's built into. And so they monitor that uh groundwater at few locations um as supplemental monitoring uh for the landfill as well as some of the other units that are in that area that Dan and Tricia talked about, like the tank farm and the container storage area, et cetera. Um, we also do monitoring on the site-wide interceptor system that Dan was just talking about, that is a corrective action that collects shallow groundwater, make sure that none of the shallow groundwater can get offsite. And then the leachate um that Dan talked about, that's the liquid that's in contact with the waste. Could you go back, Dan? Sorry, I didn't quite finish, the leachate um is, there's also monitored the leachate um to uh just kinda get an idea of what that liquid that's in contact with the waste, what sort of uh water quality it has and how much of it they're generating. Uh, there's also a surface water uh feature that goes through the property lingle drain that is monitored to make sure there are no releases to surface water. Um, and then there's a couple other historical sort of corrective action areas um that are monitored in the shallow sand, uh a six oh four vault area and the former quench ponds. Okay, next slide, Dan, please. So this, this figure just shows the landfill there, this is the hatched area. And then um the uh deep monitoring wells, so the deep groundwater wells are the ones that are blue around the landfill and the shallow uh monitoring wells are the ones that are brown around the landfill. Um, and then I'm gonna show on the next slide a cross section that goes kind of from the uh southwest to northeast along that blue line. To kind of give you an idea of the geology at the site, go ahead, go to the next slide, Dan. So this is a, the cross section through that area that was shown on the previous slide, and so the, the shallow sand um groundwater is that yellow thin veneer that's on top of the, the clay uh that the landfill is built into, and then below the clay, there's another primarily clay glacial till unit. Um, and then below that is the uh deep aquifer, that is the unit where it's defined as the uppermost aquifer, that's where the detection monitoring program for the landfill, the wells are screened into that unit. And that lies on top of the bedrock at the site, so, next slide. So this is the deep groundwater monitoring program, the groundwater flow is from the southwest to the, to the northeast. This uh is shown by the arrows there, and so we have five wells, one of which is kind of up gradient in front of the landfill and then four that are down gradient past the landfill. Next slide. Actually, there's another one very far to the south too, sorry. So the, the detection monitoring, the deep groundwater monitoring in the uppermost aquifer is uh analyzed, the wells are sampled twice a year uh in the spring and fall, uh the wells are analyzed for select volatile organic compounds, semi-volatile organic compounds, metals and other inorganic parameters. The select volatiles and semi-volatiles are based on what's in the leachate, so the things that are, are in the leachate are the things that we would be looking for in the groundwater as an indication of, if, if there was a problem, those were the things that would show up. Um, and then they're required to report that data to us, evaluate it statistically using various methods depending on the parameter and the um, and that, and then if there are any issues in terms of anything unexpected, detections of compounds at concentrations that are um statistically significant, then the license requires them to follow up um very specifically, investigate if there's a problem. Um, and that's all defined in the landfill, um to date, we have not seen any releases from the landfill. Next slide. This uh just shows the shallow monitoring ground with the supplemental shallow groundwater monitoring that I was talking about. The uh brown circles are the locations of the monitoring wells around the landfill. In this shallow unit, the flow is the other direction to the uh southwest. Um, so there's uh seven or eight wells there, next, next slide. So this uh, these wells are also sampled semi-annually, again sampled um for select uh, select chemicals. Um, and again, they are obligated to report the data. Uh, like ninety days after they sample it, get to us, let us know. Uh, and, and this, this unit's kind of supplemental, not a detection monitoring program, so they're evaluated to uh kind of look for trends, uh see if there's any unexpected uh detections of any compounds uh that could be tracked back to the landfill or any of the other uh hazardous waste operations in the area. And a- again, there are impacts in the shallow groundwater due to operations not related to current operations, but historical operations prior to uh, prior to recra. But we haven't seen any releases from current operations, next slide. So this, this slide shows the uh site-wide interceptor system that, as Dan said, is installed in the shallow groundwater, essentially a French drain, so it's uh uh installed at the bottom of the of the shallow groundwater into the clay and, and filled with uh gravel and uh it is pumped, uh the groundwater is pumped to, to maintain a low level in that, in that unit. Um, and then that, as Stan said, uh is pumped and uh removed for treatment at Dow. Next slide. So they sample the CIS quarterly uh for hydraulic monitoring, meaning they have to show that they have a inward gradient, so they're pumping the water that they collect in this site-wide interceptor system constantly, and they maintain it low so that um it, it's collecting the, any groundwater that moves into it and any offsite groundwater um. I mean, any groundwater can't move offsite because the gradient is inward towards the facility, so these are, they're monitoring at uh several points around the perimeter of the site to make sure that they maintain this quarterly. Uh, this hydraulic monitoring inward gradient, um, then they also do analytical monitoring on a quarterly basis. Um, for volatile organic compounds and metals, other inorganics. Um, again, they're required to report this data, uh pro- provide us an evaluation of that data um to make sure, you know, keep an eye and make sure things aren't, unexpected aren't occurring. Uh, they're also required once every two years to do a, it's called an appendix nine, which is a list in the federal regulations, it's very comprehensive. Um, couple hundred different chemicals of all types, volatiles, semi-volatiles, pesticides, herbicides. Um, and so the purpose of that is just to make sure nothing's changing and we're looking for everything on some frequency um to see if anything new is showing up, next slide. The leachate, as I mentioned, as Dan mentioned, is the liquid that's in contact with the waste, so they are uh that location is at a sump in the southeast, sorry, southwest corner there, that green dot is a sampling location, next uh, next slide. So they um for the leachate, they are required monthly to record volumes. Purpose of this is just to kind of, that should trend relatively, I mean, it's related to land, uh to rainfall, obviously, but we do have them record that. Um, they also do quarterly monitoring. Um, and then they also do this once every two years, a very comprehensive appendix nine list again to to make sure we're, we're looking for, or, or, you know, looking for any major changes in the leachate, uh not seeing anything unexpected, and we use the the compounds in leachate as the basis for what we look for in the, in the groundwater, next slide. There's also a surface water feature at the site, which is that green line, kind of maybe a little bit hard to see, um. And so we monitor uh at a, a couple locations at, yeah, that, that helps, thanks, Dan, a couple locations there, next slide. So this is done semi-annual, again analyzing for um volatiles, semi-volatiles, metals, other inorganics, so they're sampling it at two locations that were on the map there, one is up gradient before the, before the um before it gets to the property, and then one down gradient, uh and so they compare the data, the down gradient data to the up gradient data with the assumption being that, you know, um anything showing up at the down gradient that is not present in the upgrading is a result of something that happened from uh getting into the drain from Dow Silicones, um and so uh they're evaluate that data statistically to make that evaluation, again, the license is very specific about uh if something is detected that is statistically significant, needs to be followed up on. Um, and um, we haven't had any significant problems at, at, any releases to lingle drain. Next slide. So this is a last program, there's a couple programs here that are part of corrective action monitoring, kind of supplemental monitoring, if you will. Um, the six oh four vault wells, which are the ones on the north, those three above soil investigation area too, and then to the south, the quench pond, it's another area where there was historical release. Uh, we do some monitoring, the soil investigation areas are the are the areas Dan was talking about, about the twenty eighteen release from the chemical sewer that are currently being investigated. There are no formal monitoring programs um for those yet, there, there may be uh depending on what we find in those investigations, next slide. So the two programs there in the shallow groundwater, six oh four vault, semi-annual sampling uh for uh volatile organic compounds, um again, the data is, has been pretty stable, they're required to report the data and evaluate trends to see if any, anything unexpected is occurring. The quench pond is uh annual sampling for chloride. Uh, and again, um, reporting required and uh trend evaluation done, and again, that one has been relatively stable as well. So I think that's it, I'll give it back to Dan or Trish, whoever is next.
Me. I'm gonna talk over the next couple slides, compliance summary. At the Dow Silicones facility, there are four comp- onsite con- compliance inspections conducted annually, these are conducted by district staff and or hazardous waste section staff, we evaluate compliance with the license conditions and applicable regulations. We, the inspections include visual inspections of the tank systems, containment areas, container security, records review, which include manifest, uh waste approvals, waste acceptance, inspection records, training records, contingency plans. If issues are identified, they are documented through a violation notice or compliance communications. Next slide. The compliance issues are, resolution is conducted through communication, documentation and or or a follow-up inspection or a consent order. Currently, there are no outstanding violations at the facility and the facility is currently in compliance at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tricia. Uh, thank you, Joe. Um, all right, so at this point, let's go through the license renewal process. Starting back, when we first received the license renewal application was in March thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. The application was distributed for review. We completed our administrative review to determine whether the license renewal application included everything it needed and determined that it was complete in October of twenty-two. We sent that determination out in December of twenty-two and held a public meeting in Midland to see if anyone wanted to discuss the complete application. Uh, there's been ongoing opportunity for public engagement. Since that time, our contact information has been available on the agency's website for Dow Silicones renewal application. And since that time, the project team has visited the facility on numerous occasions to conduct inspections. And since that time, the project team has visited the facility on numerous occasions to conduct inspections. We've completed a technical review of the renewal application. And drafted license conditions as we've discussed earlier. The public comment period on the draft license began in August on the fifteenth. And tonight, we're here at the public meeting and hearing to um. Receive comments on this proposed approval of the draft license. The public comment period will continue after tonight and until the end of the month. On September twenty ninth. And once the public comment period concludes, the agency will move forward. Based on information received during the public comment period and at this meeting and hearing. To make a final determination regarding issuance of the renewal. And uh, any comments received into the administrative record during the formal public hearing. Will be responded to in writing in a responsiveness summary. Copies of the notice of final decision and responsiveness summary will be sent to everyone who's on the facility specific mailing list. So that you can see how those questions were answered. So tonight. We're going to take public comment, and uh, there are some types of comments that we are empowered to consider. In terms of negotiating further with Dow to get specific conditions put into the license. That will cover things that impact the community, uh, such as technical mistakes. Or any non compliance we might not be aware of. Or, for example, um, nuisance items or safety items that might be associated with. Increased traffic flow, odors, or other things maybe we haven't considered. Some of the things that we can't consider are whether or not um someone likes the renewal application or licensed facility. Or how popular it is, and uh, other things that maybe are going on in the community, but are not necessarily related to hazardous waste. Management at the facility, um, so for example, if you were gonna submit a comment. Into the administrative record for a formal response tonight. Something like having a concern over the increased amount of semi trucks in the area. Uh, based on facility operations, maybe they're they're causing traffic delays or other. Other problems in your community, and um, so you could submit a comment that says, hey, you know, we request a license condition be added. To include that Dow has to route their trucks through certain routes to and from the facility, so it doesn't cause all kinds of traffic problems. So that's one example of something that we could consider. All right, so formal written comments can be submitted to me by email or at the address by snail mail. Um, as long as they're postmarked no later than September twenty ninth, twenty twenty three at five P M, that'd be the close of business. So please include your name, address, and email if you're eat, um, if you're doing a snail mail request, um. And just your name and address, if you're sending an email, would be fine, uh. Put a statement in there for why you're making the comment, what the comment is, and uh, any supporting facts that you have. Uh, for your comment. And with that, I think we've reached the portion of our show where uh we have a panel answer informal questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan, um. Just wanna remind everybody that we've, we're opening it up right now to any questions that you might have, if you have a question, you can either. Type it into the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar, or if you like, you can click the raise hand icon and we'll call on you and unmute your line. Um, if you're on the phone, listening in, you can hit pound two. That'll indicate to us that you wanna ask a question and can unmute your line. Uh, we don't have any questions in our queue right now, so if you have a question, go ahead and type it in. Um, I'm waiting to see if anybody has any questions, just wanna remind you to check out the chat. Uh, Christine's here with me as well, and she's been putting a lot of information in the chat, so. Links to a lot of the sites that uh Dan and the team here referenced, as well as contact information, um, that's, that's all in there. And you'll also see up on the screen right now, there's a slide with, you know, all our panelists here that are available here to ask, answer any questions you might have. Um, if we don't have any questions, that's okay, um, that's no big deal, we can just go over to the comments, so. Just wait for a minute here to see if we get any pop in. And I am not seeing any questions. So with that, uh, we can move into the next part of our meeting tonight, which is the official public hearing. So, at this point, what I'm gonna, oh, one thing I wanna remind everybody too, is that if you look in the chat, a copy of the presentation is in there. If you missed it, Christine just dropped it in there again, um, so if you wanna go back and look at the slides for tonight, you can, you can open them up. In in the chat. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna turn over to Rich, and he is gonna read off our official uh hearing statement, which we're required to read. Um, that explain what's going on tonight, so go ahead and Rich, and when we come back, I'll open it up for comments.
Good evening, I'm Rich Conforty, um, supervisor of engineering program support unit and today's hearing officer. This is the public hearing for the Dallas Silicones Corporation Hazardous Waste Storage and Disposal Facility and the Proposed License Renewal. Thanks, Dan, so how do we make comment? The, as Jim's pointed out a couple times, raise your hand, uh. We'll call on you, type it into the, the question and answers or uh. Type number two, and then you can uh put it there, call in and put it that direction, formal comments should be sent to Dan Daly, as I mentioned earlier. Go from there, right? So this is the public hearing portion, we're recording the hearing tonight, and we're maintaining it as part of the public record. The recording we shared with uh Dow Silicon subscribers and anyone on the official mailing list. Public comment period runs from August fifteenth through September twenty ninth. Eagle will make a final decision on the application, draft license after the close of the public comment period. Eagle will can issue a final decision in response to comments to anyone providing formal comment. Dow Silicones subscribers and anyone on the official mailing list. Following the meeting slash hearing, we're in the hearing stage now, and a final decision, these resources will also be available at Michigan dot gov. Four slash Dow Silicones. As a reminder, during the hearing, we will not be responding to your comments, we'll be in listening mode. The comments are for the official record and will be reviewed and considered by Eagle prior to a final decision. Collected officials are invited to speak first, others will be called upon in the order request that we receive, in the order request received. Before providing comment, please state and spell your first and last name, please limit remarks to five minutes, so all who are interested have an opportunity to speak. And as a reminder, how to make a comment. Do I see, don't see any raised hands? Anything in the chat, Jim?
Okay, yeah, all right, so at this point, thanks, Rich, we're gonna open it for comment, I'll have Dan pop on again too. Uh, listen to comments you might have, just to um. Remind you'll give, if anybody has a comment tonight, we'll give you about four minutes, um, kinda keep track of it on my phone here. Now, when you registered, some some of you did pre-register to attend and you marked you wanted to make a comment, we did have one person. That already indicated they wanna make a comment, uh, his name was Ted, uh, Todd Rosler. I do not see him attendance though, so if Todd is in attendance and logged in by another name, go ahead and raise your hand and. Well, of course, unmute you, but uh, since we don't have anybody on our list of people that already asked to comment, I will open it up now. And if you would like to make a comment, click the raise hand icon on your toolbar and it will unmute you, so you can make your official comment for the record. If you're on the phone, you can hit pound two, and you can make your comment as soon as we unmute you off the phone. So I do not see any hands raised, I'll give it a, a few seconds here to see if anybody does make a comment. Up on the screen, you will see other ways to make an official comment, if you don't feel comfortable making comment tonight. For the record, you can also submit a comment for the record uh by email or. By mailing it into the what, to the um, address you see on your screen. All right, well, I always, it's a little uncomfortable, I know, but I like to keep it open for a minute to see if anybody does. Wanna make a comment, and I'm not seeing any hands raised or anything to indicate anybody wants to make comment uh through the question box. So with that, I'm gonna have Rich go ahead and close it out with the closing comments or closing remarks.
There we go, I'm not muted now, uh, thanks for joining us, we're at the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, uh, you can get ahold of us at one eight hundred. Subscribe to the D S C, you're trying to manage that Michigan dot gov, Eagle Connect. And at this point, at seven oh two P M, we're gonna consider the public hearing closed, thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Rich, and I wanna remind everybody that this hearing was recorded and will be posted on Eagles YouTube channel within the next couple of days. Thank you all for spending some time with us tonight, and uh, thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Good night.
All right.